We'll call the regular meeting, the City Council to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I'll ask Mayor Pro Tim Forrest-Fleming to lead us in the pledge.
Please join me if you will.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated.
Next on our agenda is an invocation to be given by Reverend Paul McClure from Oak Hill United Methodist Church. Reverend McClure, welcome.
Thank you, good to be here. Let's all pray, please. Almighty and gracious God, we thank you for your Spirit present with us this evening. We pray your blessings, your wisdom, and peace for all hearts and minds gathered in this place. We ask your guidance for those making decisions this evening, that they will be good and right in your sight, and will bless all residents of this city. We thank you, Lord, for showing us your way and for helping us to walk in it. All for your glory and all by your grace, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend McClure.
Thank you, sir.
Introduction of council to my far right, Wendy Cato, City Council, Forrest-Fleming, Mayor Pro Tim, Louis Vina, our City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our City Manager. Sidney Simmons, City Council. Chris Hawkins, City Council. Carolyn Richardson, who will record our session today. And Becky Brinkley, who will be interpreting for the deaf. Our first order of business is a service pin for John Steele. John has 20 years with the electric department. And he is not here, we'll present that to him at a later time. Under public advocacy, we have Public Power Week is this week. And, let's see, let's get to it. I have a resolution for Public Power. Whereas Public Power is a crucial component in cities and towns across North Carolina, contributing to the overwear of welfare of communities by providing reliable electricity, excellent local service, and prompt restoration. And whereas North Carolina, more than 70 Public Power Cities and Towns are among more than 2,000 across the country. And whereas many of North Carolina's Public Power Cities and Towns have been electric providers for more than 100 years. And whereas Public Power meets the electric needs of 40 million Americans, almost 15% of electricity consumers. And whereas North Carolina's Public Power Utilities are valuable community assets that contribute to the well-being of the community and provide economic development opportunities. And whereas North Carolina's Public Power Utilities are dependable institutions that provide excellent service and a commitment to the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the week of October 6th through the 12th, 2019, is Public Power Week, a week to promote Morganton and North Carolina's other Public Power Cities and Towns for their contributions to their communities. And be it further resolved that North Carolina Public Power Communities join with all Public Power Systems in the United States in this celebration of Public Power. Adopted this 7th day of October, 2019, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. I need a motion to accept this resolution.
So move.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'll ask Wendy Cato to present that resolution to Brooks Kirby, our Public Power Champion. Brooks, would you like to say something, please?
Thank you very much. To the mayor and City Council and the City officials, I wish to express my thanks for this resolution. Public Power is the needed thing, but mostly it's local people helping local people. And in honor of that, we have a table set up here in the lobby during the working hours. Everyone is invited to attend for free refreshments. And put your name in for a drawing for some prizes. And I just want to again thank you for this great honor.
Brooks, did we send any crew down to the coast during the hurricane?
No, sir. The hurricane wasn't that bad, and the crews down there worked extra hard to get the power back on.
We were ready though, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Had two crews ready.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next, we have a resolution for the public for Fire Prevention Month. Whereas the City of Morganton is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Morganton. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally. And homes are the location where people are at greater risk from fire. And whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths occur at homes each year. And when the smoke alarm sounds, residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety. And whereas Morganton's residents should teach children to escape on their own in case adults can't help them. And should make sure everyone in the home knows how to call 911 or the local emergency number from a cell phone or a neighbor's phone. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme is "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape. Plan and Practice Your Escape", effectively serves to remind us that we all need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor of the City of Morganton, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city. And I urge all people of Morganton to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Morganton's Fire and Emergency Safeties during Fire Prevention Week 2019. Adopted this 7th day of October, 2019, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk. And this is proclamation. So I'll ask Forrest-Fleming if he'll present that to our fire captain. I think Israel is here, if you'll come forward.
Captain, congratulations. I appreciate you greatly.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I appreciate you.
Israel, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. Just real briefly again, so everyone will know, October the 12th, the North Carolina State Fire Marshal's Office has asked that all families stop at what they're doing at that time at 1 o'clock on October the 12th, and go over your fire escape plan with your family in your home. And with that, we as the three fire stations of City of Morganton will be sounding our sirens just to remind the families within the community to do that.
So it's not going to be an emergency, that's just the...
It's an emergency.
Okay.
Just a reminder.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is Certificate of Achievement from the Government Finance Officers Association. Sally?
This is a national program that the city participates in. The CAFRA, as we call it, the Financial Report that Karen Duncan provides and prepares every year, is submitted to this program, and it is reviewed for its proper presentation of the accounting and the auditing for the city. And it is a testament to the fact that our financials are transparent and that they meet all the qualifications for this program. This is the 32nd year in a row that the city has received this award.
Congratulations. Next on our agenda are the upcoming events. We have a reception honoring Mayor Pro Tim Forrest-Fleming on Monday, November the 4th, from 4:00 to 5:30 in the lobby of Morganton City Hall. At Kama, we have The Color Purple, a film screening on Thursday, October the 10th, at 7:30. And The Mystical Arts of Tibet on October 15th through the 18th, with various events. Those events are that the musical arts of Tibet will be held at Kama. There'll be free activities going on Tuesday through Friday with a ticketed event being held on Saturday, October the 19th, at 7:30. The opening ceremonies begin at 12:00, 8:00 p.m. on Tuesday. Tuesday through Friday, there'll be a live mandala sand painting from 10:00 to 6:00, where the community members will be allowed to help with the project. That will be from 10:00 to 6:00 on Tuesday. At 6:30 each evening, Wednesday through Friday, there'll be a free lecture. Wednesday will be the Ancient Art of Healing. Thursday will be the Meditation for Focus and Stress Relief. And Friday, Death and Dying, the Tibetan Tradition. The closing ceremony for the mandala sand painting will be Friday at 3:00. The Saturday evening at 7:30, which is Sacred Music and Sacred Dance, will be presented at 7:30. Tickets for that performance are between $28 and $35 each and are available at the Kama box office. On Saturday, October the 19th, at 7:30 is the Sacred Musical Dance. That's the sacred dance for oral healing. The National Dance Company of Siberia will be in Morganton Thursday, October 24th, at 7:30. And the Kingdom Choir will be at Kama on Tuesday, October 29th, at 7:30. Downtown, we have Flavors of the Foothill Event on Saturday, October the 12th. West Union Street will be closed from noon to 9:00 o'clock on October the 12th.
And that's ticketed.
And that is a ticketed event.
On the street.
On the street. Actually, eating on the street, tables on the street. Ghost Tours will begin October the 18th and run through Friday and Saturday evenings through October the 26th. October Oyster Outing, the Burke County Arts Council's Oyster Road will be Saturday, October the 19th. Halloween Spooktacular will be Thursday, October the 31st, from 3:00 to 6:00. And the Farmer's Market continues on Wednesdays and Saturdays. Recreation Department will have Spooky Meadows, October the 25th and 26th, from 7:00 to 10:00. And the Burke County Sports Hall of Fame is in November the 7th at the Community House. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency Number One update.
Nothing at this time, but I also want to congratulate Michael Burley, who is the winner of the Art Re-Art Program. Was an art competition in downtown where nine mannequins were decorated by different businesses. And there was an event on Saturday night and a vote. And the lady who's out in the lobby, Morgan Civitas, she has been named. That was the creation of Michael Burley, won by an overwhelming number of votes. So congratulations to Michael. Everything on her was stuff that was in the junk pile to be thrown away, except for the mint in her hand, which is from the Community House and is not old.
Okay. Next on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. I believe there are seven items. Sally?
Absolutely. Would ask the council to approve those in one motion unless somebody wants an item removed and discussed separately. For those of you viewing at home, we have minutes from the September 9th meeting. We have the required appointment of the tax collector, which is Jenny McNeely, in an order to authorize her to collect taxes for September 1st through August 31st. We have several budget amendments. A budget amendment for $1,000, which is a sponsorship from Blue Ridge Healthcare for the Mystical Arts of Tibet Show. Another budget amendment of $1,000 from St. Charles Catholic Church for helping with the Mystical Arts of Tibet Show. And then a $5,000 budget transfer from lapsed salaries to HR to cover the recruitment expenses for the recruitment of Mike Music, our new Kama director. And then $12,000, which receives money from a private citizen who is having a waterline improvement that they are participating in. And then finally approving an amendment to the schedule of fees and charges for our electric rate that is for our large industrial customers, the industrial coincident peak rate. And we are reducing that from six months to three months in a 12-month period for qualification.
Do any members wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay. As presented. Second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes. Underneath business, we have a consideration of amending our policy concerning identification to begin utility service with the City of Morganton. Sally?
Yes. So this is the item that was referred to earlier. And we have copies of the policy that is being considered tonight, and also copies of the summary that the council was given for consideration for this item in the back of the room that have been translated into Spanish. So we thought that would be helpful. So several times throughout the years, there have been questions that have been raised concerning acceptable forms of identification in order to get utility services. For years, the city, like other utility providers, other public providers and also private providers, just defaulted to U.S. government-issued IDs. And this practice has been around for some time. In 2013, the city was having fairly significant growth in our uncollected accounts. And at that time, the council, after significant discussion and very much controversy, adopted a tiered deposit system where your credit can be checked. And if you have no credit or your credit is poor, your deposit amount goes up. We've been doing that since 2013. That has appeared to work as our uncollectible accounts have really dropped off and are less than one-half of 1%, which is really great. Recognizing the demographics of our community and how we are changing, and looking at current business practices, looking at business practices, and also what it takes to make our community work, and what it makes for all of us to have the opportunity to live here and live with each other and enrich each other's lives. We did a survey of other communities in western North Carolina that provide power, and looked at some of the cooperatives that do the same, and also at Duke Energy. Out of that, we found out that it's across the board. Everybody does something just a little bit different. In addition to that, after the September 7th council meeting, I think that the City Council heard your voices and heard your request, and tonight are considering a change to the policy. The policy is written, we hope, to be very specific, to be very clear, and to be very direct. We also believe that the policy matches what is dictated to us in state law. And Louis is going to discuss what that is.
Just briefly, to be clear, local government utilities are authorized by law to, if they wish, which all of us do, to require specific identification for anyone applying for utility services. And we've always had a policy of requiring that. This policy simply updates and replaces that and specifies, as is allowed by law, that we will accept any photo ID issued by the federal government, by any state government, whether North Carolina or another state. And that includes driver's licenses and passports and the like, military ID. Or we will accept any current non-expired passport with photograph issued by the government of any country, or any non-expired driver's license, again with photo ID issued by the government of any country. What we cannot accept, and the policy spells this out, are those items that state law forbids us to accept, which is basically two things. Consular documents issued by a consulate of any country, or any kind of identity document issued by a non-governmental entity, a private organization, or by a local government. So the policy spells all that out. And basically, our policy now tracks what is allowed exactly by state law.
Yes. And hopefully is what everyone here needs to make it easier to transact business and to get utilities with the City of Morganton.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend the policy concerning required identification to begin utility service with the City of Morganton as described in the attached policy text.
I have a motion. Do I have a second now? A discussion. One question I have, we are not changing the deposit policy, correct?
Correct. There is no recommended change to the deposit policy.
This is just the identification policy.
Correct.
Other questions? Other comments?
Yeah. I could comment. The City Manager mentioned that heretofore, our policy, I believe before we made the 2013 change that she referred to, that our policy at that time was such that we needed to make some changes in it simply because our non-collectible debt in utilities got to be kind of a tremendous figure. And then after we made that change, that it reduced significantly. But I'd still like to point out to everyone, including those folks that are listening to us at home, that during this past year, the years 18 and 19, that still yet, our uncollectible debt amounts to $165,000 a year. I don't know about you folks, but to me, that's a considerable amount of money. So we're supposedly going to approve this change. But I would assume with this change, if we see that non-collectible debt increase again, then we're probably going to be back to make some more changes. And that's just my comment on it.
Any other comments, questions? I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're going to take about a five-minute break. We probably touched on the top topic tonight, so we're going to take about a five-minute break. If anyone would like to stay, we have lots more to talk about, but you're welcome to stay, or you can leave. City Council, come back in order, please. Our next order of business is a public hearing in consideration for an amendment to the zoning ordinance to clarify Section 3.4.2B-3 concerning accessory structures. I'm going to call on Planning and Development Director Philip Luckadoo to help us get through this public hearing. And a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. So this first one that we have is, again, talking about the size of, allowable size of accessory structures. And so the current city zoning ordinance allows for up to two accessory structures. And the size can be up to the total square footage of the house. So as you can see, if you had a house that was multiple stories and you had a lot of square footage in that house, then you could have an accessory structure that is larger on the footprint than the house itself. So you've got to kind of wonder, what's the principal structure? A number of ordinances that we looked at, they regulated in different ways. But all of it is to keep the accessory structure in scale with the principal structure, which is the house. And so what our proposal to the planning commission, and planning commission looked at it and recommended it was two parts. One is that the total amount of accessory structure square footage be one-half of the square footage of the footprint of the house. And so that required then that we define, okay, what is the footprint of the house? So the footprint of the house then defined as the area of the principal building structure on a legal lot enclosed by the perimeter of the principal building at ground level, which may include attached garages, carports, as defined by the North Carolina Building Code. So basically, you look at what's at ground level. If you've got a carport, you've got a front porch, you've got a garage. You take all of that square footage, and you would be allowed to have up to two structures, one-half the size of that footprint.
What's the wish of council?
We have to have a public hearing. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. We'll call a public hearing to order to talk about the amendment zoning ordinance to clarify Section 3.4.2B-3. The floor is now open for anyone who'd like to speak concerning the building footprint in our zoning ordinance. Would anyone like to speak to that? Okay. Public hearing is now closed. What's the wish of council?
Motion to amend Section 3.4.2B-3 to replacing total square footage with building footage in Section A.4 by adding the definition "building footage."
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a public hearing in consideration for an amendment to the zoning ordinance, Table of Permitted Uses 3.1, Section 3.4.6, and Section 8.4 regarding event venues. Philip, I'll call on you to give us some background.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Want to open it?
We'll just go ahead and open it.
Yeah, go ahead and open it.
It is a public hearing. It is now open to talk about the amendment to the zoning ordinance. Philip, will you go ahead and you talk first?
All right. So banquet and events are currently not allowed as a principal use within the Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District. And so what we looked at, we were asked to look at a recommended amendment. And we took these before council, or planning commission. And planning commission said, yes, those are good. Let's go look at them, bring us back a recommendation. So what we brought back was a recommendation that banquet and events would be allowed as an accessory use. So we basically created a new permitted use called banquet and events accessory use, which would be allowed in the MID, HID, CBD, SID, and the NCO zones. And they would be allowed with certain conditions. And those conditions would be, one, that the banquet and events shall be accessory to the principal use. Number two, that all structures for this use shall be set back a minimum of 50 feet from any single-family residential lot. Three, such uses shall only take their access directly from streets that meet commercial street standards and specifications, and shall be classified as arterials, as shown on the Morganton thoroughfare classification map. Number four, such uses shall meet the performance standards in Article 4. In addition to the non-residential building design standards in Section 4.8.6, non-residential buildings in the MID districts within 250 feet of residential structures, whether or not they are currently being used for residential purposes, shall have a pitched roof and use wood or vinyl siding as a secondary material on 25% to 50% of the primary and secondary facades. And number five, adequate parking shall be provided. And then you would refer to Section 4.6 of the City of Morganton zoning code and Article S., Part 7 of the City Code for Regulations. And then number six is that excessive noise shall be prohibited, and noise pollution is regulated by Section 8-6010 of the City of Morganton Code. And then we would also, as in the previous text amendment, would have to add a definition to Section 8.4 of the zoning code. And it says banquet and events accessory use. A facility for lease for private parties, accessory in nature to the principal use. Such facilities may, and then in your report it says "may" or "may not", but actually as it came out of the planning commission, should read, "Such facilities may provide catering, photography, or similar services associated with private parties, weddings, birthdays, and similar occasions."
We're in public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the motion to amend Table 3.1 with definition of banquets and events? Seeing no one approaching, we will close the public hearing. What is the wish of council?
Motion to amend Table 3.1, permitted uses, to add banquet and events accessory use as a permitted use with conditions as stated in Section 3.4.6H. To add Section 3.4.6H, providing conditions for banquet and events accessory use, and to add the definition of banquet and events accessory use to Section 8.4 definitions.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Philip, one question I have is, on the chart that we're given, it's in our book. As I understand, the last line of the chart, banquets and event accessories, they will not be allowed in LID and EID. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Other questions?
The parking is an issue for me. Just a question about parking for these facilities because we're talking about perhaps some private homes being used, or planning and zoning didn't find that that would be a difficult... a difficulty for it.
They felt that either parking would be provided onsite. And if you notice, it just says adequate parking shall be provided. So it can be provided onsite or maybe in a public lot or somewhere where they would rent.
Or on the street.
Or on the street. And that's why we referred to the Article S. Part 7 of the city code relative to parking on the street.
The other question is, because we are adding this, people who currently have large birthday parties or whatever in their private homes, will they have to get a permit or anything in order to do that?
No, this is for someone that's operating.
A venue that's operating a public venue. Okay.
Other questions? I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Our next order of business is a public hearing and consideration for an amendment to the zoning ordinance within permitted uses, Table Section 3.3.3 regarding a restaurant drive-thru. This is a public hearing. Public hearing is now open. I'll ask Philip Luckadoo to give us some insight into the restaurant drive-through situation.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, currently, and as we saw in the last amendment where you have a permitted use and it may be permitted but with conditions, restaurants with and without drive-throughs are also permitted and have various conditions. And so what we saw is that restaurants with no drive-throughs were required to meet Sections 3.4.5A and 3.4.8A and C, whereas a restaurant with a drive-through did not have to meet the Section 3.4.5A. So we felt like that it was, it was.
A mistake.
A mistake when it was first written, that it should really, but both types of restaurants shouldn't really be subject to the same regulations. And so that was the basis for this.
Trying to treat everybody equally, correct?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to speak concerning, during the public hearing, concerning this approval of the amendment for restaurant uses? Public hearing is now closed. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to recommend approval of this amendment to add uniform conditions to the restaurant usages.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion passes.
There's nothing quite as dry as the references to a zoning ordinance.
Section 3.3.3.
It depends on your point of view.
Understand.
Okay, next on our agenda is consideration of grant awards of entitlement funds to nonprofits. I'll call on Sally.
So as a part of your 2019 action plan for our CDBG funding, as we have done for a lot of years now, there is a part of that funding that is designated to help fund nonprofits. And it is a competitive process. We do the full amount out of the money that we get that HUD will allow us to do for this program. This year, out of our distribution, it was $22,235. Applications were received on September 16 and reviewed by staff with the requirements of the program in order to score those and then recommend awards. And we have Lisa Helton here tonight to talk about those awards. She is our administrator of these funds.
Good evening to everybody. This year, we had six applications. One was not eligible because they have received funding two years in a row. So to be fair, we try to, if they receive funding two years in a row, we don't let them receive it and skip a year. So we have four that we would like to recommend for funding. The outreach center, we'd like to recommend $5,399, and that is to purchase some equipment for their food distribution program. Options, we'd like to recommend $10,930, and that is for some repairs to the shelter and also to purchase some items that they need. And also, they have $1,000 for their client housing assistance program. And this is used for once the laser are ready to move out of the shelter to help them rent an apartment or a house. The next is the meeting place. We'd like to recommend $4,500, and this is to a repair that is needed on one of the shelters. Olive Hill, we'd like to recommend $14,006, and this is to buy some supplies for their homebuyers program.
You've heard the description. Do I have a motion?
Move to award the fiscal year 2019 entitlement funds to nonprofits as recommended.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Lisa, thank you so much. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Okay, next is consideration of approval of a contract for the purchase of a trailer-mounted sewer vacuum system. Sally?
This is one of the equipment purchases that we approved with this year's budget in our capital plan. And this is a replacement for our older piece of equipment that we have. We were able to find this on state contract and recommending that we award the contract in the amount of $42,600 to Vermeer Mid-Atlantic, which again is a state contract provider. We had budgeted $45,000.
So we came in under budget?
We did.
Great. What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the purchase of a trailer-mounted high sewer vacuum system from Vermeer Mid-Atlantic for the amount of $42,600.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of award of a contract for a downtown parking study. Sally?
This is an item that we talked about at the end of last fiscal year and told you that we would be bringing back to you a proposal. So looking at downtown and current growth, expected growth, looking at parking lots that we rent, looking at parking lots that we own, looking at conditions of all of those, considering parking enforcement and all of the above, thought it was time that we contract and do a formal parking study. The city has several engineering firms that we keep on retainer. Two of those have done parking studies before, and so we contacted them, recommending that we consider awarding this to Gannett Fleming. They are one of those firms and they have the most direct experience. They have recently done parking studies for Wilmington, Raleigh, Winston-Salem, Franklin and several other North Carolina communities. So they've had a lot of experience doing it. The study will take about three to four months, and there'll be surveys, there'll be onsite activities that will happen. They'll do some planning back. And ultimately, this will come back and be presented to you once we have it, probably sometime pretty close to winter workshop time, is what we're hoping. The cost for this is $40,000.
When will it start?
As soon as we award it, probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. What is the wish of council?
Motion to award a contract for $40,000 to Gannett Fleming for a downtown parking study.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? The only thing I'd like to add, Sally, is could we put a couple of more parking restrictions or parking limits on West Union Street? I think there's only one sign in the block for, between Treat and the Grind. And a couple of people have gotten tickets, they didn't see the sign for a two-hour limit. Can we put a couple more signs on West Union Street?
We will take a look at that.
Okay.
Although I think there's more than one sign there, just to say, I think there's two in that block, but we'll make sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Motion passes. Next is consideration of authorizing the city staff to proceed with the development of an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow the cutting of standing timber. Louis, I think you're going to take this?
Yes, somewhat unusual situation. It's come to the attention of city staff that, under our table of permitted uses, which we've been talking about a lot tonight, there is no category to permit the timbering of property, that is, the cutting and sale of standing timber, in any of our zones. So therefore, unless you're clearing land for construction, technically, it's not permitted anywhere in the city. And that is true that in some cities, that is exactly the policy. But city staff felt that it is worth looking into this and perhaps considering a zoning amendment to provide for allowing the timbering with certain conditions, of course, in certain zones. And since this is not a request that came from a citizen or anything for the amendment, the easiest way to begin this process is to have council, direct staff to prepare something which would then be presented first to Planning and Zoning Commission. And if they approve, then it would come back to council.
And I will add that this was an allowed use in our former zoning ordinance.
Before 2015.
It looks like it's one of those things that got lost in the shuffle.
So the public would be allowed to come to P&amp;Z and hear the discussion?
Be a public hearing at P&amp;Z and then ultimately back at city council for another public hearing.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to direct city staff to develop proposed amendments to city zoning ordinance that would allow and permit the cutting or clearing of standing timber within the city.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Anything else to come before city council? I would like to wish everybody a safe Halloween. Please, the streets will be crowded. I know downtown Morganton will be extremely busy. And so we ask that the kids be safe and the parents make them safe. So anything else to come before city council? We adjourned.